Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our regular scheduled board meeting. We are happy that you have taken part of your time of your busy schedules to come be with us tonight. We are going to be moving through our agenda, and I want to welcome you and giving up your time. After we have the pledge of allegiance, let me take this moment right now to share my concern that you understand the public participation part. The board will take no action during public participation. This is your chance to share your thoughts with us. And it is, it is our role as board to listen. Issues concerning specific staff members are to be directed either to the building leader, AKA principal, or the department leader cabinet members, as the board must take care to remain impartial in the event of an official complaint of which we would set in judgment. I will ask Superintendent Ni to monitor the raise your hand feature and those who wish to address the board. We will adhere to the 20 minutes. Two minutes per speaker. We ask that you give us your name, your address, so that we can keep it for our records. With that being said, would you all please stand? The flag is in the right hand corner, and I will lead it from the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Communication to the board.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Again, great to be here with you tonight. I, we have no, no changes the agenda in terms of review of the agenda is as printed. I did want to recognize someone we have with us tonight. Dr. Rachel Polk Grant, the UCC president, is here with us tonight. Thank you, Dr. Polk Grant. I, we went back to look at the last time we had a UCC president in our midst. It's been some time. We found zero the last 25 years, so thank you for your partnership. And I will address the board and my report tonight in a partnership that we are continuing to build with UC. So thank you, Dr. Polk Grant, for being here. Thank you.
Student leadership report we have tonight with Emma Kahler and Ally Naglin. Please turn on your mic.
Hello, I'm Ally. And so basically, we're just going to talk about the school stuff first. So we have our link crew. That's something that like welcomes all the eighth graders coming in to, well, become ninth graders, of course. And so we've got a new group to welcome the class of 2027. And then we've got Evening of Excellence going on May 3rd at 6:00 PM at UCC to highlight some students at RHS. We've got prom this Saturday with the theme Enchanted Forest also at UCC. Oh, wait, no, it's not. My bad. It is actually at the fairgrounds. Okay, and then we had our robotics team, Aries. They went to Worlds in Houston, Texas, and they placed 36th overall and third in design. So we've, and then we've got staff appreciation next week. All different departments are doing something to like appreciate our staff. Leadership is doing breakfast. And then we've got Pride Night is coming up, as well as eighth grade visitation already happened. We had Link Crew and counselors give a brief tour of campus and help them do course requesting for next year. We've got a new club, Community Engagement Association, and a service project, and they like reform efforts to make an inclusive community at RHS. We've got new social studies electives options for next year, mock trial AP, human geography, Native American Studies, Psychology, History Through Music, US Sports History. FFA had a banquet last weekend, and over 200 people attended, raising over $30,000 for the school. And then last Thursday, 105 students from Fine Arts, Ceramics, Yearbook, and Photography went to Umquah Valley Art Center, and were able to see their art on display as well as other exhibits.
All right, I'm Emma Kahler. Happy to be here at my home school. For sports, we have, this year we have had 806 athletes and varsity GPA of 3.54. Baseball sits at second place right now in the league, two weeks until championships, and they have a bye this weekend during the prom. Track has had lots of volunteers. Last track meet is today. The Twilight Meet was last week, and over 30-plus teams competed. Softball, they're playing well and learning along the way. They swept South Eugene this past weekend. And tennis, we recently completed all our home tournaments. We will have districts coming up, and we will have half a South Eugene and half at home. And we just recently had nice weather, so we've been catching up on all our canceled games. And recently, this last weekend, the boys competed in the Ben tournament, but the first day got canceled due to weather, so they just went bowling the entire time. For golf, they are working hard, having a good time. Same with girls lacrosse. And boys lacrosse, they beat Maris for the first time in forever, and they are in second place in state. In moving on to leadership, we've been working hard on prom decoration, so we can get it all set up on Friday. We are preparing for a senior brunch on Sunday, May 7th. This event was inspired by Mother-Daughter Tea, but we have made it to be more inclusive. And we have introduced this new thing called activity proposals, where students in our class can propose new activities and want for next year. A popular one right now is Winter Formal and Field Day.
All right, and a little bit more, we've already kind of said staff appreciation. We're doing like donuts, pastries, coffees, and all like the staff rooms and the library at school. We've got volleyball coming up, which is like volleyball, volley. Yes, but it's for like the boys, and we've got a staff team as well, Senior Sunset, and Homegoing Week. And then we also have elections coming up for the school year. Thank you.
Excellent job. We are extremely proud of you that you stepped out of the fade to give us our report. Thank you so much. Next, we have a student and staff recognition. I've asked Assistant Chair to assist me and I, as we co- do the students.
Whatever. You're the boss. I'm going to turn this this way and balance it precariously, but it'll be okay. I'm going to recognize two students tonight, and as I call your name, I want you to come up and stand right here. Please bring with you teachers, friends, parents, whoever came to support you. They can stand with you, and we will present your certificate and read a little bit about you. So first is Edeline Corolo. Did I say that right? Okay, good. Come on up. Where's family? All the people. You gotta go send more in the middle. No hide behind the table. Any teachers who want to come up? The whole fan club. There we go. Edeline has been selected a Student of the Year at Melrose. There are many reasons why she deserves this award, but universally, the staff and students use the word "respect" to describe her. Respect is exemplified through her daily interactions in the classroom, the playground, and with her family. According to one of Edeline's teachers, Edeline is always willing, is always a willing helper and can be relied on to complete classroom tasks with efficiency and accuracy. She is kind to others and well-liked because she treats others with respect. She is very deserving of this award. Congratulations. So you get a certificate, and then you get a McDonald's gift card that you don't have to share. Okay, did you get a picture? Okay. I think I'm supposed to be. Congratulations. All right, if I get this wrong, you have to fix it. Aline, did I get it right? Miller, is she here? Okay, come on up, straight from track. Yay, come on up.
And look, she just came from the.
I know. This is the second time, the second time we've been someplace and we've had to have a RHS student show up in their track clothes, out of breath. Those are dedicated track athletes. Aline attended Melrose and Hugh Crest Elementary, and Jolaine and UVC during middle school. She's involved in track right now, and lacrosse this spring, and is also a member of the Spanish Club. Aline fills her spare time, is there any, playing the piano and spending time with her church youth group. Her favorite classes are ceramics and Spanish, and she hopes to go in the medical field and become an ER nurse. Teachers describe her as an exceptional student who is truly deserving of this award. Her commitment to academic excellence is evident in the effort she puts forth. Aline gives everything she does 150%, is incredibly organized, and is always willing to participate fully. She's reliable, responsible, and determined. She's a good student, but more importantly, a good person. Congratulations. Right. Maybe save the McDonald's for after. Coach is brown on that. Gabby here? Gabby Parrish? She here?
I don't see Gabby.
I don't see them here. No Gabby. She's been super sick. Okay, we will catch her next time. Okay. All right, I'll start with that.
Well, we just want to make sure everything is coordinated, and we're missing one of the young ladies that would be a student recipient. It is now my honor to introduce our staff who are receiving an apple reward, and the first one is from Melrose, Sandy Wayman. Ladies and gentlemen, it's an honor to share with you what I've been told. Sandy has worked for Roseburg Public Schools for 17 years. In those years, she has made learning about and growing students' love and belief in themselves as important as improving their reading and math. Sandy is our biggest cheerleader and encourager. She is cheerful, positive, a team player, and loved by the entire staff. Sandy is a champion for those that she serves. She shares daily jokes, but also holds her students accountable. Sandy learns about her curriculum and researches best practices to improve all areas of student learning. To put it simply, Sandy is our eighth in the whole. She digs for more from herself and others. She sets all Melrose students up for success. Thank you, Sandy, for your dedication and your students in this district. Congratulations. Thank you, Gabriels. The next two persons will be honored together. From Jolaine Middle School, we have Evelyn Atkins and Jack Saylor.
There's more Jolaine teachers here.
Jack and Evelyn are the positive spark of Jolaine's culture. You could always count on something humorous or a little crazy from them to brighten the halls. They both care about students immensely and do everything they can to help make their day better. Every school needs personalities like theirs to keep things light and energized for staff and students. Jack and Evelyn are the life of the party and make the school community better every day. They are also described as the glue that holds the TAP program together, with an amazing ability to create positive relationships with students who struggle with behavior. This dynamic duo is always there when you need them. Calm, cool, and collected, during times when the majority of us would be sweating bullets. Both women do truly, truly deserve this honor. Congratulations to the two of you.
All right, you guys stay up here, because I saw Gabby come in. So our Jolaine friends. All right, we have one more student. So Gabrielle, do you want to come up? Bring your mom. Teachers at Jolaine say that Gabrielle is a delight to have in class. She is smart, has a wonderful sense of humor, and does exceptional work. Social Studies teacher Vern Thompson says if he were to make an all-star team of students, Gabrielle would without a doubt be on it. Art teachers Eric Olson and Jerry Foster describe Gabrielle as a kind and considerate person with a keen intellect. She is innately curious and focused on the details in her work and takes time to understand the nuances presented in a lesson or technique. Gabby was an integral member of the art club production crew that created the scenery for the spring drama production. Staff put her in charge of completing certain panels because they knew she would produce the quality that was necessary. Gabby is an exceptional person and worthy of this honor on so many levels. Congratulations, Gabrielle.
Are they going to excuse them now?
Yes. On behalf of the school board, I wish to congratulate each one of the recipients. And it is our custom that after we present the award, we take a short intermission to allow those of you that took time from your busy schedule to come out and support your loved ones with these awards. So the meeting is going to take a brief recess, three and a half minutes, and we'll come back. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming. We'll call the meeting back to order. Next item is the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thirty seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the consent agenda has been approved.
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment? Included in the consent agenda is the list of gifts to the district. And I was really impressed with the number of people and the size of the contributions that went to support having the robotics kids go to Texas. That really shows a sort of a broad-based community support for that program.
Point well taken, and we do appreciate them, the givers of those gifts. It contributes to the education and the economics of the school district. We will not have public participation. I have asked Assistant Superintendent Ni to monitor the 20 minutes. If you please come to the podium, state your name, and two minutes.
Scott, is a light on up there?
This is, this is.
Scott, just.
You want a green or yellow?
Green.
Green, good. All right.
Scott, just to let you know, the timer will go off at two minutes, so that's when we ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
What's the penalty? All right. Yeah, good evening, board members, district office administrators, and superintendent Gordon. I want to thank you for your time, your leadership, your guidance that you give to make Roseburg School District my home for the last 31 years. My name is Scott Lamarck. I'm a teacher and coach at RHS, and I am here tonight representing a large group of players, coaches, parents, community members, and business owners who would like to make the following proposal. We would like you to ask for your approval to add, not replace, to add Thurman Bell Stadium with "It Takes Us All to Make the One" underneath in a smaller, smaller font above Finley Field sign that's already out there. We're going to add to it. All right. Above the press box. This new sign would match the current sign at Finley Field. Our timeframe is to make the dedication of our first home game in the fall. Our new principal was a former player, Mr. Bills. It would be a great opening night to start off the school year, have alumni come back, have a, have a big barbecue before and do the dedication. I think it would be a great way to bring back a lot of people into the stadium and get it near full capacity. All right, I would like to start the proposal off with a letter from a former player. You might know him. His name is Troy Calhoun. He's the head football coach at the, at the Air Force Academy. Troy couldn't be here. He's coaching the Air Force Academy team, spring ball, but he did offer to send a letter within 30 seconds of a text asking him for some help. And so it was pretty special, because I've only met him once. All right. To whom it may concern, when I was asked this week to write a letter in support of Roseburg-Finley Field to include Thurman Bell Stadium, I eagerly jumped at the request without any hesitation, as I feel that this is the most fitting tribute. If you ask nearly any former coach or player who had the honor of following his direction, if Coach Bell was deserving, the overwhelming response would be absolutely. Simply put, Thurman Bell is the finest teacher, coach, leader, and whom I've ever been associated with at any level to include high school, college, and the NFL, and any sport. His on-field record was an amazing 332 wins, 30 state playoff appearances, nine state final bouts in the final game, and four state championships. He led the team to the first 14-0 season in 1981 that won the title 22-0 in a most dominant display of championship game, holding Lebanon to minus 55 yards of total offense. Yet solely to focus on Thurman's on-field success would reduce the profound influence he had on Roseburg community and the hundreds of students and fellow coaches who were so fortunate to follow his charge. Thurman Bell willed high school students, citizens of Roseburg, to believe, even from a lumber town, you could achieve to the utmost of your talents and abilities if you were focused and committed to a very disciplined approach. And when the teamwork was necessary to realize it takes us all to make the one. I first practiced for Thurman as a soon-to-be sophomore quarterback at Roseburg High School in August of 1982. Each of us played for Thurman can vividly recall many, many demanding but fair teachings moments that were experienced under his command. The lifelong lessons we learned from him, the value of discipline and teamwork, the tireless and thorough preparation, and ultimately, the class and competitive spirit were a trademark of Thurman Bell coached players and his teams. However, it was in his internal makeup, the humility, the trustfulness, truthfulness, and intense strength of will that made him the best. Based upon the merits and sheer coaching talent, Thurman Bell could have coached it certainly, and certainly won championships at virtually any school or college in America, but loyally chose Roseburg to be his home for the last 45 years. Because of this dedication, our community and the area of state benefit from his guidance and mentorship of our kids. I have one more paragraph, but I think you get the gist. All right. Okay. Thank you for your time. All right.
My name is Jamie Ragwin. I'm here tonight to give a glimpse of a former player, parent of a former player for Thurman, and a community member. In the time of being a player in 1975 and '76 for Thurman Bell, I really had no idea of the impact his teaching and coaching would have on my life and my family. The discipline we practiced under was intense. Competition was fierce. To earn a Road Runner or a Mad Dog jersey was a goal of every player. They were the first string players' practice jerseys, and you were able to keep them after the year was over. Road Runners were all white with an orange Road Runner on front, and the year that you had earned that jersey. The Mad Dog for defense was mascotted by a white Bulldog on the front and the year on there as well that you had earned that jersey. Like I said, the players were able to take these home and, and keep these, and they were a treasure to every first stringer. Before jerseys were given out, there was the depth chart. A huge board in the locker room displayed front and center with every player on the team named and in a position that they would be playing and a string that you were going to be on. With the great practice, you would hope to be moved up on the depth chart, and with the bad practice, you could probably figure on going the other way. It was eyes on the board every day. No position was a guarantee. Thurman's pre-game calisthenics were an amazing glimpse of the kind of team we were, a disciplined machine, all business, no glitz, pure determination. Each exercise pointed at perfection. Captains in the front looking over the team and Thurman walking through the team, bellowing commands and blowing the whistle. And I might add Thurman's whistle had a certain sound to it, and every player knew that whistle. Thurman would always say, repetition makes for perfection. If you do it right and you do it well, you will be successful. Just one of the many life lessons we were all learning. I use this philosophy when I coach my kids many years later. I knew then I had learned a lot from my coach. And passing on those ideals was second nature. One of the speakers you will hear from tonight is Joe Newton, who I was proud to have coached. Thurman, every year before football started, would meet with the grade school coaches and junior high coaches to go over new rules in the game and coaching strategies for us to follow. When my son Asa played for Thurman, I really understood the commitment and the impact Coach Bell had in my life and our community. His style had changed some, but his philosophy had not. To the new stadium being built and the, and paid for with a minimal cost to the school district and the field that followed, Thurman was there making it happen, bringing the community together like a team, doing it right and doing it well. Individuals of businesses and donating back to our school, making a difference because of Thurman, and that's our kids. It takes us all to make the one. You're going to hear this more than once tonight. What a poignant sentence. Not only as a coach, athlete, athletic director, counselor, and a friend, I cannot think of a name more suiting for our stadium than Thurman Bell's. Bell Stadium at Finley Field, a fitting and meaningful glimpse of the past and a great future ahead for Roseburg High School. I thank you for your time and consideration on this meaningful cause. I have a letter from another player. If we have time, I'd like to read it if, if we don't go past our twenty minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Hi. Yeah, all right. Can you hear me? All right. Thank you. Thank you very much for having us tonight. My name's Joe Newton. I work for Lone Rock Resources here in Roseburg. But a long time ago, I was an athlete and had the pleasure of playing for Thurman for three football seasons. I owe, I owe a lot to Coach Bell. And thanks in large part to his coaching and mentorship. I got a scholarship to play football at Oregon State University where I got a degree in forest management, which brings me back here to this community. And I'm so lucky to be here raising my kids. Coach Bell is no doubt an all-time great football coach, but his impact on this community is much greater than football. He was a unifying force that brought our community together. His leadership and guidance extended well beyond the football field and into the community, creating a sense of togetherness that was wonderful to see and be a part of. Under his leadership, our football team achieved great success on the field, but the impact of that success on the community was truly remarkable. People from all walks of life would come together on Friday nights to cheer on our team, and the atmosphere was electric. The success of our football team brought us all together, unified in our pride for our community and our school. So naming the stadium Thurman Bell Stadium at Finley Field would be a way to honor this legacy of unity that Coach Bell helped to create. It would serve as a reminder of the power of sports to bring together people and inspire future generations to strive for excellence both on and off the field. As a member of this community, I have seen firsthand the impact that Coach Bell had on so many lives. His leadership and guidance helped shave the, shape the lives of countless young people in our community, me included. And his legacy lives on today in the way we come together. So in conclusion, I urge you to join me in supporting naming the high school stadium Thurman Bell Stadium at Finley Field. Let's honor this remarkable man and the impact he had on our community by creating a lasting tribute that will inspire future generations to come together and strive for greatness. Thank you for your time and consideration. And just, just to note, a, a letter of support from Jake Cookus, who's on the staff at Oregon State University currently, and we could have gotten letters from hundreds of, of former players in support of this too, but really appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Um, hi, board. As many of you know, I'm Julie Thompson. I'm a member of the Melrose community. I live at sixteen fifty-one Elgrows, and I currently work here at Melrose Elementary School. Tonight, I'm going to be speaking on behalf of our classified staff here at Melrose. There have been many of us that have wanted to bring this conversation to the table for quite some time now, and we couldn't think of a more appropriate time to do it than tonight. Right where we have roots, right where we all feel supported, where we feel loved, and where we even are being encouraged to do so. Unfortunately, here at Melrose, we currently have many of our classified staff contemplating whether or not that we'll be returning to work here this fall. We also have several people currently looking for other jobs, and it isn't a decision that we're taking lightly. We love our jobs. We love our students. We love our work family. And most of all, we love making a difference. However, as the economy has changed and we are more than ever feeling the impact of our low earning wage, it has become even harder to justify giving of ourselves and not being fairly compensated. As I'm sure you're fully aware, our classified staff are some of the lowest wage earners in this community. Fast food workers, bottle drop attendants, retail clerks, custodial services, and many others make a much better wage than those of us working right here in our schools. Me personally, I work as many hours as my position allows. My take-home pay is a little over eleven hundred dollars a month. It's not a survivable wage. And many of us that are classified staff, we can't even afford to purchase the health insurance that the district offers. Something has to change. I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Corden in October. Go Beavs. And I was told that the board, board was fully aware that something needed to change and that the board recognized that our classified staff could pretty much go anywhere else and make a better wage. Mr. Corden was exactly right. But it's time that we change that. We've waited way too long. We can't hold out any longer. Um, it's time that the district invests in what you've called the backbone of our public education system. The wage the district has continued to offer is no longer competitive, nor is it fair. We need you to invest in us so that we can continue to invest in our students, our community, and invest in our schools. And tonight, we'd just like to ask you that you help bring these conversations forward without delay so that we can work together to ensure that we retain the quality-carrying staff that we currently have. Because if we don't make a change, we're not going to retain that staff. And I, I know I'm over, but if I could just share something personal. Unfortunately, circumstances have changed for me over the last couple of years. And today I had to take that next step. Today I had to go and apply for a job elsewhere. As I walked in, there was one of our students with his mom. Mrs. Thompson, what are you doing here? What are you doing here? Tears welled up in my eyes, and I couldn't even respond. How cowardly and sheepless I felt. The student that I've been working with the past several years that is continually dysregulated, that has behavioral problems, and I've worked very hard on a daily basis to build a relationship with and build a foundation for that student. And yet I'm faced with having to make a change, not because I want to, not because I don't love my job, but because I have to put myself and my children first. And I can, I know that I can speak with not only the staff that are behind me today, but I can speak for the other classified staff throughout the district that we feel unappreciated. We feel under-valuate, undervalued, excuse me, I'm a little bit nervous, and not heard. And I just invite each one of you as a board member to reach out to us. Me personally, I have the time to talk with you about our concerns to talk about changes and see how we can make this change for everybody. Our staff are important. We've seen the quality of subs that come through. We know the positions that are open. There aren't people to replace us. So we just ask going forward, they can consider that what we've said and reach out to us so we can discuss this further. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Tom Nelson. I'm a lifelong born and raised person here in Roseburg. Went through the Roseburg school system nineteen seventy, graduate of Roseburg High School and have decided to bring my family back. My wife is a nineteen seventy-one graduate of Roseburg High School. And tonight I wanted, it's kind of ironic that we're meeting in the Melrose Gymnasium. As I walk into the gymnasium, it's the Robert Bob Colley Gymnasium, named after a great person, Bob Colley, as we talk about Thurman and the stadium. Last week at a budget committee, just a little side comment that we, what was going on is that the comment was made on how appreciative board members are of staff members that work five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years in the Roseburg School District. And tonight we're talking about somebody that has given his forty-five years of commitment to the Roseburg School District. He's, Coach Thurman Bell has gone on to make a difference in lots of the lives of young people. I've known Thurman since the mid-seventies, shortly after he arrived in Roseburg. I always admired his teaching and coaching skills. In the mid-nineties with Thurman as a member of our North Roseburg Rotary Club, we decided, since we had so many highly skilled people construction-wise in our group, that we take a little bit of a task out of our comfort zone when it came to a community project. And we launched the task of raising funds and building the metal north grandstands as it stands at Finley Field. That took the place of some condemned wooden bleachers. Thurman was an integral part of that fundraising and the project. Cost was approximately six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, of which the school district put in two hundred and fifty thousand for that size project. In the early two thousand, Thurman called me on his way back from Grants Pass and attending the coaching clinic and looking at the new facility at Grants Pass. He says, Tom, I was at Grants Pass, saw their new facilities with the artificial turf on their football field. If Grants Pass can do it, why can't we do this at Roseburg? Before he was arrived home, he had lined up some construction people, dirt moving, field prep, came up with a budget. He had the working kind lined up. There was a two hundred thousand dollar pledge from a nineteen sixty-eight Roseburg High School grad that unfortunately never came through. The project was sort of done in a wrong way because the funds weren't raised. The project went ahead. However, I don't, I really believe that that project would not have been done if it weren't for the likes of Thurman Bell putting that together. Now you think about the, the extra classroom over at the high school, how much that meant. We had several years of that extra classroom that meant PE classes, marching band practice, lacrosse, soccer, track and field, and the Roseburg High School graduation ceremonies as they are held there today. Again, that theme, it takes the all to make the one. In October eleventh, two thousand and ten, Thurman was presented by Mayor Larry Rich, the key to the city of Roseburg by the mayor, for his three-hundredth career win. In Larry's eighteen years of being the mayor of Roseburg at that time, Thurman was only the third person to get this award. In addition to all of Thurman's wins in state and ord and all the playoff success and the many things that Thurman was, had accomplished, he was awarded in two thousand and eleven the NFHS, the National Federation of High School Football Coaches, as the National Coach of the Year. Couple of friends of mine, Scott Spiegelberg and Barry Spiegelberg, on the board of the Oregon Sports Hall of Fame, asked me to put together a nomination packet for the Oregon Sports Hall of Fame as a potential inductee. I found that packet the other day, letters of recommendation. The Oregon Sports Hall of Fame recognizes and honors Oregon's rich and athletic history. The show of about letters that were written was incredible. Thurman was a unanimous inductee into the Sports Hall of Fame. Past inductees into that organization include the likes of Terry Baker, Bill Seanley, Bill Walton as a Portland Trailblazer, Clyde Drexler, Steve Prefontaine, Dennis Erickson, Pete Sussex, Mel Ingram, Fred Spiegelberg, DeAndros, Mike Bellotti, Rich Brooks, Aliskos, on and on. We had the largest fan base at that dinner in Portland that evening. Many of Thurman's former players, in addition to friends, colleagues, family. I was amazed at the willingness of those that attended that meeting as well as the letters that were written, and I enjoy those letters, read them every once in a while, just for, for the sake of how many people thought the world of Thurman. People like Troy Calhoun, Jake Cookus, New Bueller, an Oregon State graduate, Rhodes Scholar, who went on to be the Republican nominee for governor of the state of Oregon. Now I want to quick go over Thurman Bell, forty-five years, three hundred and thirty-one wins, a hundred and fifty-four losses, third winningest coach in Oregon's history. Medford, Fred Spiegelberg Stadium, two hundred and fifty-four wins over thirty-five years. Mel Ingram Stadium, two hundred and twenty-six wins, forty years total, twenty-two years at Grants Pass. South Humqua, Kent Wygle Stadium, seventeen years, a hundred and seventy-three wins. Kent Wygle Field at Pete Sussex Stadium, twenty-one years, a hundred and thirty-four wins. Pete Sussex Stadium, twenty-four years, two hundred and thirty-five wins. Others, North Eugene, Gary Selby Field, baseball at Sweet Johnson Stadium, Dan Withersfield at Douglas High School, John O'Malley Baseball Field at South Humqua, Jim Maccabee Baseball Field at North Medford, Stu Robertson Memorial Gymnasium, of course, in Roseburg, Dennis Murphy Court in South Medford, twenty-eight years at South Medford. Tennis, Roseburg. Al Hoffman.
Tom. I'm sorry, there's, we only have seven minutes left for everyone to talk.
So Al Hoffman was named the national, from Roseburg in tennis back in the sixties and seventies as the National Coach of the Year. So thank you for letting me go over time, and I hope that we can continue to work together to accomplish this goal. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Toni Jorgensen, and my address is one-ten Paradise Point Lane, Roseburg, nine-seven-four-seven-one. I am a parent of six children, four of which go to Fullerton for elementary school. I am here on behalf of those parents because there's some concerning things going on at Fullerton that we are aware of and coming here, we were basically told that we are not allowed to step up and talk about it, and I feel that that is inappropriate and that we are being stifled as parents, and that's not okay. Our kids have been through the wringer with COVID and other things, and my daughter is in the fifth grade. She, the last year that she had a normal school year was in second grade. Okay, oh, sorry, excuse me, first grade. Second grade she was pulled, right, because of COVID. Now she's going to have her first full year back, and her teacher's pulled from her classroom. Unacceptable. I have letters from parents in the classroom that will go to you. And we want our voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you, board, for listening to us and Dr. Gordon. My name is Tim Sustair. I've been a health PE teacher at RHS for the last nineteen years. Also football and baseball coach. I was a nineteen ninety-eight graduate from Roseburg and lucky enough to play for Coach Bell. I was lucky enough to get hired on his staff from two thousand and four to two thousand and fifteen when he retired. I speak for most players mid to late nineties when I say how, how much Coach Bell meant to us, what he did for us, teaching his discipline. He was more than. What he did for us, teaching his discipline. Um, he was more than a coach to so many of us. Um, a father figure for us that didn't have that at home. Teaching us how to work hard, see the benefits of that hard work. There's so many great memories, being a, being a part of a team that was fourteen and oh and won a state championship. Being part of a program that went twenty-eight oh, twenty-eight and oh and won two state championships. The impact that he has had on this community speaks volume. He is a Roseburg staple, a true legend. There's no better way to honor this man by naming the stadium Thurman Bell Stadium at Finley Field. This needs to happen, no more waiting. Um, as Coach would say, it takes us all to make the one. Uh, for the sake of time and other people, I have a letter here, I'll hand uh Dr. Corden um from Coach Steve Lander. Uh, he's been there a long time. And he tries not to uh talk too much about himself when the small successes, as he says. Um, with the wrestling program at Roseburg High School. Thank you guys for your time.
Hi, I'm Ross Boland, Athletic Director at Roseburg High School, and first thing I'd like to do is publicly thank the board and the district office administration for allowing me to do something that I've absolutely loved the last thirty-three years. And this being my last year as Athletic Director and retiring at the end of this year, it truly, uh, there's not a better place and that I wanted to work for. Never wanted to work for another school district besides Roseburg School District. And one of the main reasons it for that is Coach Bell. Coach Bell took a tall, skinny, unathletic kid, me. And really developed me into a college football player. And I was lucky enough to play football in college and experience Coach Rutchman at Linfield, and I was lucky enough to come back. Cause I wanted to come back and coach with Coach Bell. As my job as Athletic Director, every day is impacted by the lessons I learned from Coach Bell. And I use it in my daily work, every single day with our coaches, with kids, um, and all of our different programs. And there will never be in the history of our state, another Coach Bell. Because keeping coaches now for five years is good. You know, there will never be another forty-six-year, you know, person coaching in our state. And um, so the board knows. Before we started down this road, we've talked to the Finley family, because that was one thing that concerned me. Is I didn't want the Finley family to say, hey, you know, we, we don't support this. I wanted their support. As we move forward with this, and the Finley family was honored to be able to share that um with Coach Bell. With Thurman Bell Stadium at Finley Field, and they were honored to be able to do that. So, thank you.
Hi, my name's Lena Nelson. Uh, my address is one-six-six-eight Brondo Drive, Roseburg, Oregon. Nine-seven-four-seven-one, excuse me, I'm very nervous. You'd think I'd be used to talking in front of people. I have been the Fullerton Four Booster Club President for six years. I have lived here for only seven years. In that time, I'm also a president or a parent, and I've got to know the staff very well at Fullerton Four, and there is some horrible things going on in this last month that anytime I try to shine something on or I say something to people, I have been called, I have been confronted and told that if I keep speaking what I feel is the truth, I am going to have repercussions for my own school. For that we will get in trouble. I don't know what that meant, but like maybe events will be not allowed. I don't know. But I'm very tired of being intimidated. Um, I was even told that if I came up and spoke about a teacher tonight, that she would definitely be fired. So I will not say her name, but I'm not okay with being intimidated. We do not like this, and most parents want to be hurt. So please start knowing what your district's office is doing because it's really seems really shady. And if you want to call me at any time, I'm more than welcome to answer questions or talk because I'm not okay with what's going on. Thank you.
There's, we have time for one more.
I'll go quick. Um, my name's Tracy Seadoff. I'm a parent of two kids that have gone through um Fullerton Four. Fremont and now Roseburg High School. Um, I'm coming here to talk about Ms. Kenyon. I will say her name. She's a great teacher. She is um one of the few teachers that have gone above and beyond from a kid. Sorry, um. Every kid's different, right? And uh, when I first met Ms. Kenyon, my fifth grader, my son, came to her class mid-year, which is difficult anyways. But she opened him, she came with open arms to him and connected with him and made him feel comfortable and was able to take a child that maybe didn't love school so much, maybe had a difficult time. And really make him love his new school, make new friends, feel accepted and get a good education. Um. There's different levels of teachers, I would say, um, that I've experienced, some that go with status quo. Do their job. They go on their merry way. Some I don't even think like kids. Um, I had a teacher the other day that my daughter said hi to outside of school, and she said, do not bother me. I'm not on work hours. You can't come up and talk to me. And I was appalled. But there is a handful of teachers that are great in your schools. Um, Ms. Kenyon is one of them. Brett Bungardis at Bungardis at your high school is amazing. Rob Colton High School, amazing. And so I just want to say that I'm not sure of the situation that's going on at Fremont, but I can, or Fullerton, excuse me. I can speak to how Ms. Kenyon is a teacher. She's wonderful. She goes above and beyond, and she connects with all of her kids. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Chair Johnson, there's also one question.
My name is Paul Mason, and I'm supposed to identify my organization. I'm just a dad. And a husband, a dad to a daughter that graduated Roseburg High, and my son um as well goes to Florida to Fullerton and is on the same, same uh conversation. Um, we love our teachers. They're, they're awesome. Um, in society, the way things are nowadays, it's scary. Um, every time you hear some of the news with schools, I don't like, I don't want to go there, but it's always scary and you worry about your kids. And our teachers, we depend on them, and the teacher that we're talking about that we're not supposed to say her name. I don't want to, based on what I've heard. Um, but we depend on teachers like her, and she's awesome. She's a part of our family. Um, she's a part of so many families out there. And I'm not good at this or not good at just verbage in in general, but she's known so well in the community. Um, we're at a restaurant yesterday, my son and my, my wife and the owner, she always comes and talks to my son, and she goes, well, how, you know, they always go back and forth along with him and the teacher we're talking about, they'll talk for ten, fifteen minutes. And he recommended him to go there and, and he's telling her how he heard about these tacos, he's um these uh case, case of video tacos, and uh he mentioned her name and he, she goes, yeah, I, I know her. She goes, I actually had an employee. And her family didn't have money for Christmas, and she came and dropped off a check and envelope for this family. And I know on a teacher salary, that's not easy to do. That's just the type of person she is outside of work and inside of work. She's such a big part of our hearts and our family and uh all of us, and I can't think of anything negative. And my son's been going to Fullerton for, he's only missed one year and he's eleven. So, but thank you for your time. I don't want to take up anymore, but I do appreciate the chance to get up here and talk to you guys, so. And also congratulations to the teachers that uh received awards and the kids and, and uh, yes, so thank you.
Suzie Parker, if you'd like to speak, please unmute.
No problem. Uh, my name is Suzie Parker and I'm a parent. My, both my daughters have been um students of Fullerton Four. Um, I'm also here, and I will say her name, Angelie Kenyon. I don't think that parents should be limited to not mentioning someone's name when the subject is such a touchy subject. I could tell you so many stories that are beneficial that she's provided for students. But I think the parents before me, some of those who have kids that were in my kids' class have already shared those. So instead, what I'm in the focus on is what she provides for the district. What she has provided for the district is a safe and inclusive place for students to go when they have nowhere else to go. What she has provided is an educational opportunity for every student to be able to learn. For every student to be able to have an opportunity that they don't have at their home. I don't have to tell you the statistics that occur at Fullerton Four Elementary with the poverty levels of the student database. I do not have to share with you that a majority of those students come from a poverty-stricken home. I don't have to tell you that a majority of those students enjoy going to school to be in her class because she is an amazing instructor and she cares to a fault. She cares too much for her students to the level which I can almost assure you that ninety percent of her student base is probably by request of the parent because that's how much of an amazing teacher Angelie Kenyon is. And the fact that two months ago, she was provided an award by the district who is now diminishing her as a teacher is a fault, not just on your own accord. Is it a fault? But it is you're not being a good steward of the state, you're not being a good steward of the district. And I don't see how in sixty days' time, this, this teacher is being threatened and parents are being intimidated with firing her. It is absolutely absurd. And you want to talk about having an inclusive, safe place for students to go? She has harbored and grown that. There are programs at Fullerton that other schools cannot even breathe a thought of, of pursuing because they do not have the dedication or the compassion to do that for their students. But this human does. There should be a lot of thought put into this process, and there should be consideration taken into place with the thoughts and the feelings of the parents. If it's not enough for you that we show up, show up for her tonight, I look forward to sharing any written format of any of my feelings, and I, I will rally with any of the parents to provide any uh written agendas that you need to to show how important this individual is to the district. That's all I have to share. Thank you for the time.
On behalf of the board, we
The gentleman in the blue shirt wanted to be, I think I should, I think I should give him that.
All right, I promise I'll keep it quick. Uh, Steve, members of the board, representatives of the school district, uh, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Dr. Brady McNulty, and I have two kids also at Fullerton Four. Uh, I'm going to start off by saying two things. One, this is the fourth rendition of this statement I've written in the last like thirty minutes. Uh, two, I want to end the public comment on a positive note. Uh, I'm here to stand in support of a certain educator. We all know who I'm talking about. Angelie Kenyon is an amazing teacher. She is someone whose name brings up nothing but smiles in our home when we mention her. She has a singular gift for connecting with children of all needs and all abilities. Her skill in creating an atmosphere of inspiration and inclusivity is just unparalleled. She has personally bridged gaps for us within my own family that others previously had glossed over. She's an integral part of our community. Her unwavering commitment to the profession is manifest in everything that she does. From meticulous lesson planning to empathetic interactions with parents and with the students. She is a shining example of all that is good and right within the profession of education. Now, here's the point is, given the current shortage of qualified educators, of good educators. I would remind you how grateful this community is to have Ms. Kenyon as a teacher. I've, I've personally never met a teacher of this caliber. And so today and every day, I would like to recognize teachers like her, but especially today. I would like to recognize Ms. Kenyon for everything that she brings to our school and as a result to the community. I respectfully submit that. Thank you.
On behalf of the board. We have heard your passion and your comments. And we have run past our allotted time. But if there's any of you in the audience tonight that would like to ask something that has not been repeated, I will extend the time.
So I'm going to apologize ahead of time. I am extremely nervous right now. Um. I am currently a third grade teacher at Fullerton Four Elementary. My name is Lisa Villers. My address is one-seven-one Second Street in Dillard, Oregon. Nine-seven-four-three-two. I contemplated coming here tonight. And up until an hour beforehand, I planned on not, not coming. Because I was scared that if I was seen here, that my job might be in jeopardy. I have worked for this district for four years. I came to this district as someone who has wanted to be an educator since I was five years old. I interviewed at Fullerton and I decided that I wanted to finish my career at Fullerton because of the staff and the students there. The things that I've witnessed over this last week, um, I was involved in the incident with Ms. Kenyon. Um, on Monday, I was pulled from actively teaching and asked to be interviewed about that situation. I have been extremely nervous about whether my position is going to be put into question and I'll be removed from the district. Because I offered support as a union member. I don't know if this school board is aware of the things that are happening in our school district. If they are aware of the intimidation tactics that are being used. But I want this school board and our community members to know the feelings as teachers we are having. When I am too scared to come to a school board meeting because I might be recognized. And I don't know if I'm gonna have a job in the next week. That is terrifying. But I also have my daughter here who was in Ms. Kenyon's class. And she was that teacher for my daughter. That for the rest of her life, that will be the teacher she remembers. My son, who is six. Who has not even been in Ms. Kenyon's class. Will spend every morning before school in her class and every day after school. He has gone to her room every day with pictures that he's colored and taped on her window, just in case she comes back. I want you to understand that you are, the impact that you are making on your district, on your teachers and on your parents. Thank you for your time.
Again, I offer no re, no repetition. You got something new, I'll listen. See, there'll be none.
Um. Hey, you have your hand up. Will you please unmute and state your name?
Yes, hi, my name is Kat Kenyon. I'm actually Angelie's sister. And I just wanted to mention that last summer, when my fiance died, I was misplaced and she took me into her home. And every night after work, she worked on her agenda and stuff for her students for an hour and a half at least. Every night before she did anything else to make sure that her stuff was done and that her kids' needs were met. Just want to make sure y'all know.
My name's Jason Walker, uh, three twenty Topaz Lane, Roseburg. I have five kids. My youngest is ending her, uh, her last year at Fullerton right now. And my kids have been through a lot these last three years through COVID and whatnot. And there's a, there's a few people that really, really stand out through that period that really made things hold together. For my kids and, uh, I mean, just to avoid repeating what everybody else is saying here like. I think that teacher is obvious right now and I'm one of those parents that say it's a pretty amazing individual.
Hi, my name's Jaren Mason. I'm two eight two six Colvin Street in Roseburg, nine seven four seven one. I did not plan on speaking, but I did have two things to add. Definitely there is a fear at Fullerton. I work there currently. I'm an aide in fifth grade. I was there. Um, during some of the events and I don't know everything that's gone on, but I know that Angelie is amazing. But I also know because my son went through the COVID years and all the weird stuff. But last year he had a teacher that left. It was also dramatic. It was also tough. Mixed up. We didn't have all the information. He fell so far behind in reading and math. Because of the shuffle and I know we're late in the year, but emotionally speaking, what he went through and the stress level. That was on him. I'm thankful for the first time this year that he's not in Ms. Kenyon's class. Because while I work in, um, the other class, he sometimes wishes he could switch. He spends all of his time after school there, but pulling a teacher out. In the middle of the year is so hard on the kids. I watched it last year. And experienced it firsthand and seeing it secondhand is awful. He's, he's still stressing out like he did last year. His stomach aches every day this week, headaches, and I know her class is going through the same thing. Um, I'd really like if the board would think of the kids that are involved in this. Because she is an amazing teacher and this is their last possible opportunity to have her. So many of them have requested her. There are second graders that come down to see her every day. They still are checking before they go to their bus to see if she's back. It's not an easy thing on a kid, so please consider that when you consider how soon, how long this goes. Thank you.
My name is Jase Jorgensen. My mom is Toni. I am up here because Ms. Kenyon is my favorite teacher. I want her back. And if I don't get her back, then I'm not going to go to Fullerton anymore. And if I don't go to her class, I'm also, I don't, I don't know what to do.
Um, my name is Kalina Jorgensen and I'm Jase's sister. Uh, I experienced the same thing last year, except my teacher got an injury. She is not, Ms. Kenyon is not only the best teacher. But she is several kids' safe, safe place in person. Um, and I don't have anything else, anything greater to say about her. Then she is the best person you will ever meet.
We have no more comments for public participation. We will now move into our agenda. Item number one is request for approval to add restroom facilities at Melrose Elementary. Cheryl Nata will bring the presentation. And if you leave now, be respectful for us as we conduct our business as we work for listening to you. Please.
I have several requests before the board tonight. This is to follow the board's purchasing policy of requesting approval for purchases over fifty thousand dollars. Um, the first request is to approve restroom facilities here for the Melrose Developmental Learning Classroom, the DLC. This is a project that's been requested and under, um, under guidance or work for quite a long time. Uh, so we would like to go ahead and approve that. Have you guys referred that to quotes on your page there? Uh, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, nineteen cents for S and B James Construction. And the appropriation will be from the general fund to pay for this expenditure. And, uh, that's what I got with the DLC from Melrose. For the bathroom will be located right outside the, attached to the classroom and will include a fully accessible bathroom. And a classroom space.
Can we put item one, two, three and four together with one motion, one vote? No, separate. Okay, we need a motion to approve item number one.
I'm wishing to approve item number one.
Can I ask, well, I'll second it and then can I ask you a question? Um, what, it said a grant. What grant did we get?
So it was a form of an IDEA grant.
Okay, great, thank you.
And you said, uh, what, oh, sorry, I'm providing allergies. Just my comment, you don't have, I don't need a response, but I couldn't believe the price difference between the bids. Almost a hundred thousand dollars. So.
We're playing off the same set of plans and we had a third vendor that declined to actually bid.
So anyway, whatever it's worth.
Are we ready for the question? All of the favor? Yeah.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, Cheryl.
The request is to purchase a new warehouse delivery box truck. Uh, the delivery box truck that we had, we have had for the last twenty-five years, uh, died and was unable to be revived. So this is actually. What's going on? Uh, this is actually a little after the fact. We were, we've been looking for some time and unable to find one. We did find one and since we don't have one, we went ahead and made the purchase and we're asking for people after the fact. Um, the cost is budgeted for within the two ninety-three fund, the vehicle replacement.
May I have a motion to approve?
I move.
I have a second. We have a motion of second to approve item number two. All those with favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item number three.
The third request tonight is to get approval to replace the cafeteria tables at Joe Lane Middle School. This would be concurrent with our seismic rehabilitation grant. Uh, it would be, um, a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. To purchase these replacement cafeteria tables. And I will note that we are buying a higher grade of cafeteria table. The last purchases that we've made, the tables have not held up well. So we increased our standard and the cost of these tables, it is budgeted in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and the nutrition services fund under equipment.
I need a motion to approve to purchase the tables.
A motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion of a second. All those with favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item number four.
My final request tonight is the approval for replacement intercom system at Roseburg High School. Uh, this will be installed after July one, twenty twenty-three, so it'll come out of the next year's budget. And it's budgeted within the district's major maintenance fund. It will place the existing intercom, bells and clock system. It will include speakers, call buttons, desk control center, LED indicators for loud spaces and the wiring for the system.
You heard the, uh, presentation. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those with favors say aye.
Ask a question, Howard.
Question.
Um, will this, I, I know when we had the lockdown. Some of the confusion was because the intercom system wasn't integrated. And there were different buildings, had different systems. Is this fixing that?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
This is the same system that we have installed at all of our other locations.
Thank you. All right.
Are we ready for the question? All those with favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the list is the resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three dash fourteen, National Teacher Appreciation Week. And I would like to read the declaration, National Teacher Appreciation Week. Whereas teachers mold the future citizens through guidance and education. And whereas teachers encounter students of widely different backgrounds. And whereas a country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students. And whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating process. Counseling and coaching students and performing community service. And whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Now, therefore it be resolved that the Board of Directors of the Roseburg Public School proclaim May eighth through twelve. Twenty twenty-three to be Teacher Appreciation Week. And it be further resolved that the Board of Directors of Roseburg Public Schools encourage all members of our community. To join with it and personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication. And devotion to their work. This is going to be adopted by a motion and a second. Do I have a motion? You have a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second. Do I, ready for the vote? All those with favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Be advised, directors, that we will need your signature on this before you leave tonight. Stop by see, yeah, just to sign your name, please. It's now time for reports. Um, we, uh. Were given an idea that maybe once a quarter or once a month, a different cabinet director. Would bring personal information about the area that they are held responsible for. And tonight we have selected our HR Director, Robert Freeman. Your turn, sir.
All right, well, thank you, uh, Chair Johnson.
Share the screen.
Alrighty. How can I get this farther?
Just go to the little minus.
I don't see it. Thank you. All right. Uh, Chairman Johnson, thank you so much, uh. For the invitation to share out a little bit about the HR department. Um, tonight I want to give you an overview of our department's staffing levels in our district. Things that we do to recruit and retain teachers and, um, talk a little bit about, um. Organizations that we partner with. HR department is comprised of four individuals. It's never a good sign. Um, the one FTE of an HR director. Uh, two FTE of HR specialists and one FTE of an HR office manager. I do want to make note that that FTE is, um, also shared, um. Sorry, that's okay. Also, also shared with just the district office. Uh, they're in charge of being the reception person, um, and answering, uh, the first line on the phones. Uh, just a little makeup of our school. Uh, we have, um, thirty-one administrators. Um, that equates to thirty-one FTE. FTE is full-time equivalent. Um, and that's each day. And so we have two hundred and forty-eight hours each day of administrative support. Our licensed staff are comprised of three hundred and eighty-four people of that. It's, uh, three hundred and seventy. Uh, which equates to approximately three thousand twelve hours a day. Classified staff equate to three hundred and sixty-one people. Three hundred and thirteen FTE and that adds up to be two thousand five hundred and three hours a day. We have seven confidential staff, seven FTE, fifty-six hours a day. So in total, uh, we have seven hundred and eighty-three regular employees. Uh, that account for about five thousand eight hundred and twenty hours of support, uh, in our district each day. We do have about sixty-five, um, at-will employees. So counting coaches and other people who work for our district, uh, they're not part of that seven hundred and eighty-three. We partner with several universities. I actually didn't have room to put all of them on here, but as you can see. Um, we, we cast a large net that we partner with. And partnering could mean a variety of different things. Where we place student teachers, uh, we work with those universities. Um, to buy a path for our, um, teachers to continue to get their, uh, continue their education. And in some cases, work with universities to have a lateral movement within our organization. From say a classified employee to move up to a licensed employee or a licensed employee to move to an administrator. Again, um, we cast a large net, um, to try to recruit, uh, the best people we can. Um, for our district and, uh, just a couple of things to highlight on this list. Uh, handshake is, um, it hits every single university and college, uh, within the United States. And K-12 JobSpot, uh, is a platform where we can actually, uh, look at, um, candidates. That would meet our criteria and we can invite them to, um, apply in our district. So we actually go seeking for people. Some trends, uh, that we're pretty proud of in the HR department over the last several years. Um, we, uh, in twenty twenty-one, um, you can see our new hires for licensed and classified. And in twenty-one, twenty-two, um, you can see our hires for again licensed and classified. But what I want to point out, um, in the next column, we had seven classified staff. That took advantage of our Grow Your Own program and went from being a classified staff person, um, to being a teacher. And twenty-two, twenty-three, we had five such individuals. And one, uh, teacher that went from being a teacher to, um, an ad, an administrator. You can see our averages there. We usually average hiring about forty-eight teachers a year. And about double that in our classified groups. This year we've hired thirteen teachers already. Um, we've had two teachers go from being a class of, I'm sorry. We had two people go from being a classified person to be in a teacher this year that we've already hired. And we've had three people go from being a teacher to an administrator. And currently, uh, we have seventeen licensed staff openings. And about twenty-three, I didn't get it on this slide, about twenty-three classified openings. Uh, I've put together a document that goes much deeper in the weeds, uh, that you can take home and look at. If you have any questions at all, please feel free to reach out to me and, or my department and we can answer those questions. So if you can pass those to the directors and there's one for Janet also. Uh, that's my presentation. I would entertain any questions that you might have.
Any board members have a question? Or HR superintendent? Or HR superintendent? Mr. Freeman, we thank you very kindly for your. Digging into this data and presenting it to us tonight. We look forward to working with you in the future. And assisting you in doing the job that is necessary for our district. The next item on the item is the superintendent.
All right. Thank you, Chair Johnson. Let's mostly, can you maybe flip that so people in the. Out here can at least see something. The directors have a copy of this here. Hopefully I've got screen share on. Oh, there you go. Great. All right. So I appreciate the opportunity to visit with board tonight and share a short presentation with you tonight. You know, anytime we, tonight's been a. Right has been, I need to go back and I'll need just reflection on tonight. It's actually been a night I appreciate hearing from the community. And appreciate the chance for public comment. I do want to talk nearly every time I'm having an opportunity to talk about our school district. I want to talk about our staff and our kids. I'm going to start by doing that tonight. We have amazing staff members. They do amazing things for kids and community. We were just at an event, several board members were at an event just recently, the Golden Apple Award over at Country Club sponsored. By Neil and Kathy Humboldt, just to, just to be reminded about the great things staff do. For kids as they dedicate their life to having, making sure that we have a bright future as a country and a community. I do want to recognize this was mentioned tonight. We had staff members recently. Recognized for their service, a hundred and twenty staff members recognized for five-year increments, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five and thirty-year anniversaries. I appreciate Chair Johnson, Vice Chair Larson and Director Cotton for joining us. And thank the HR team for putting on a nice celebration. And on behalf of the school district, we want to thank those people for their dedication and all employees for the things they do each day. Also want to just make a, put a special shout out. Today is Administrative Professionals Day. We have admin professionals in every building and department and they do amazing work. I'm sitting next to one right here. Hannah Keschel, who who is one of our amazing admin professionals who really do keep things. They keep, she keeps me on my toes, which is a full-time job in all our buildings. And departments, they do great work. I want to make sure we recognize them tonight. I want to talk about kids. We have amazing kids doing amazing things and I wish I could talk, I wish I had more time to talk about our. The students we have an opportunity to work with. This is always a time of celebration for a community. As both parents and educators and community members, we can rally around our kids. I've often said that. This is the kids really represent the most important thing in the community. And there really is no force more important or valuable than the children we have in our community. And I wish I had more time to talk about all the things the kids are doing. Kids are doing amazing things in the classroom. The growth this year has been remarkable. We've got people working hard in all content areas. I'll just mention a few things, just to highlight some of the things our kids have been involved with. We had three, we've been grateful with the board's help and support to not have. Not have your zip code determine your opportunities. And we made a commitment for robotics this year and we have, we have robotics. Opportunity, a class, a club, a program in all schools across the district. It's kind of neat to see our high school kids. So we recently have, we have three high school teams, all three competed for the state. The team Aries team went to the world's competition and competed internationally in Houston last week. I appreciate the mention of the, of the donations that helped them go. They did get a third place internationally in the design award. For outstanding instructional design elements. Want to say congratulations. It's a good example of the things our kids are doing to not just compete regionally, but. But compete across the nation internationally. We've got middle schoolers. In fact, we have one of our board members whose daughter. Played a big role in the latest middle school play, doing great things in addition to their coursework. Doing things above and beyond and outside that. Descendants just was put on by Joe Lane. It was a great, a great play. And Fremont, exactly, exactly. And Fremont, thank you. That's right, combined, yep. And also mentioned tonight was the fact that we have. If we take a look at all OS double A activities, these aren't just sports, but these are other activities like band and choir. Our kids are working hard in the classroom, but what's important is they have opportunities to work hard beyond the classroom. And we have what we think is the highest GPA. Since we've recorded all OS double A activities, the fall GPA combined was three point five four this year. And the high school is a real tribute to our coaches, our staff, our parents, our kids who are getting after it. And in in their sports and activities. Want to say congratulations to them as well. All right, let me give you a couple of quick updates on safety and security. We appreciate the work the board has. Really pressed on to make sure our kids and staff and parents can be in a building that's safe. From any threats outside the building or inside the building. We have nearly completed, basically complete, Joe Lane's done now. The vestibule portion is done. We are almost. Actually, that's not true. We're waiting on one piece of hardware for Joe Lane. Fremont is completed now. So we appreciate that work and the vestibules seem to be providing a measure of safety and security that's not too cumbersome for families. And students is becoming kind of a norm right now and it does provide a measure of safety and security. We've designed out to bid for buildings. That we are out to bid right now. We anticipate that will, the work will start right as, at the end of the school year. When our students and staff are out of the building in early June, that's Winchester, Fergrove, Eastwood and Roseburg High. We expect that that work will be done by the end of the summertime. We have works in the design phase at Melrose, Hugh Crest and Roseburg Virtual at Rose. And the last three buildings, we will, the, the, the plan is to have those wrapped up. No later than spring break, all the projects. In addition to some of the safety and security updates, we did want to let you know that we are, we are applying. A what's called a destructive proof. We actually have a, a window we're going to test out to see how destructive proof it is. But it's not ballistic rated, but it does provide a measure of security if someone was trying to work on intrusion. We'll be applying those RHS Fremont and Joe Lane right now. And using the, the expiring S R or COVID funds to finish those projects along with the fencing that the board requested. Finally, I have an announcement for you tonight. Of course, this will be pending board approval, but I appreciate Dr. Pocrant being here from UCC. We have, we are co-funding a position between the school district and UCC. Dr. Pocrant and I work pretty closely together on making sure we can strengthen our alignment between our. Our schools and that's not just particularly the high school, but that seems, that's the linkage point into the college. And although there are some really amazing things we do, particularly in that CTE space. We're not as aligned as we need to be. Students have kind of a pathway that's not really clear to them. Whether you're in automotive or welding, FFA forestry, any of our, any of our CTE verticals. And so it's an area that we really need to make sure is clear for students. That is not cumbersome for students and is highly linked to the workforce. We are, we will, I will be bringing to the board a request to hire along with UCC and partnership with UCC. For a joint position that's intended to align. Job skill programs with industry in our community. A recent announcement by Roseburg Forest Products is a great example. Of what this partnership will do and providing workforce of high, high wage, high demand jobs for our students in our community. This, they'll be streaming, this position will help stream pathways specifically in advanced manufacturing and health careers. And it can help with the other CT programs we have alignment with. The primary role though will be to really strengthen the vertical with workforce and industry. With our students in a clear concise pathway for their, for their success. So I want to thank Dr. Pocrant for her vision on this, our partnership of working together. We believe strongly that this will strengthen the board strategic plan to ensure that students when they graduate. Have a plan for their most successful futures. We also believe there's a huge community element of this of strengthening workforce and partnerships with our local businesses. Who continue to have their own workforce issues. And we believe this will be a strong, a strong example of partnership as we think about a student-first philosophy. With that, happy to host any questions. Thank you for the time.
And Director Quin.
When is this position, the joint position expected to take place?
So a press release will go out tomorrow. Again, it's pending board approval on both boards at that point. But we do have a job description and we hope to post within the next week.
We have a director called your questions. It would be an honor if. If you have any comments that you'd like to add tonight because you have endured our board meeting. We're grateful that you're here.
Oh, press green. It's on green.
Okay.
There you go. Thank you. It, it, it wasn't a long, terrible meeting. It was actually really fun to hear everybody's passion about education. Because that's what we do just outside town too. I want to thank you all for serving. Anybody who steps up to do this job, you deserve a big pat on the back and a thank you for what you do. So thank you for that. And, and really just for your partnership. It's been incredible to come in as a new person to the community. And working with education partners. And just have somebody to match my passion for partnership in small rural communities. If we're not working together, we're failing. Our folks and failing our kids and I think the first time I met Jared, I said, so what do we need to do? Because your kids are our kids. And it, and we come to this position as a result of that conversation. After a couple of years, we're excited. We think that these pathways are going to make a big difference for our, for our employers. And for the kids in our community who are excited about. Being here, being part of the community, giving back, working and living here in Douglas County, which is. Which is something that doesn't always happen, right? Because students run a path to go elsewhere. Many of us probably did that too. And, and we know that keeping those talented kids here in great jobs is, is part of our goal. And the mission that you've set forth and the mission that my board has set forth too. So we're very excited. Happy to take any questions and thanks for your partnership. Thanks for being willing to come together with us.
As I mentioned earlier, I've been in Roseburg thirty-five years. We've never had a sitting UCC president come to a school board meeting. We are honored that you took your time to come share with us. And we look forward to a joint merge of walking the path to educational success in this community. Thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.
Individual director reports, Director Schickliff.
I just want to say thank you for the public for participating. This is coming on two years that I've been on the board. I think this is the first time we've used actually the full twenty minutes of public participation. As someone who's here to represent the public, it's nice to hear what the public has to say. So that's all I have for today.
Thank you very much. Director Lee. I don't know. There's always nice, but it's necessary. That's all I got to say. Your Richard Kevins.
I also am really happy to have you taking the time to come and even though it's nerve wracking. To come speak, we do want to hear from you. And, and we will respond. So please feel, feel free to come. We also. Some of what, what we're maybe dealing with is policy oriented. And so being on the, on the policy committee. You know, we're, we're bound to certain things and, and I know it's hard to understand. It was hard for me. So we look forward to just being able to work with you and, and we can resolve our issues.
Director Cotton.
I too appreciate public comment. And I always, I say this several times a year that the board is not the enemy. We work, we want to work with staff, parents. And each, each other. And I don't know the full extent of what has gone on. But it'll get, you know, it's got to get through the process and you just have, you have to trust. But I do appreciate, even it may be, it may be uncomfortable. That's our job to listen. So thank you for, for coming. Anybody that is available on the board or anywhere that would like to. Walk your neighborhood and canvas for the bond, let me know. And I'll get the information to Joe that's coming up. I really, I've had a pretty, the last week's been a fun week. I, I was able to go to the FFA banquet. Is, where's Jill at? She's still here? I didn't know she was quite the baker. They had a dessert auction. I'm not going to tell you what we, we paid for this cake. But she, she made a three-layer carrot cake. We're still eating on that. It's just incredible. But those young men and women involved in FFA, it's amazing. That's just an amazing program and. We've talked about teachers and I, I always talk about our staff. We have amazing teachers in this district. And just all of our staff that work with kids are amazing. I got to go to the middle school play on Saturday night. I would put that up against, I mean, I gotta be careful what I say. It was really, really good. If you didn't get to see it, they, they do a yearly play. And they spend three or four months preparing for it and it was really, really good. Of course, I, I work with Young Life. I do that every Thursday. That was fun. And then. It wasn't as fun as the other events, but some of us got to meet with the REA last night in an interview process for school board. Things and. It was interesting and I think it was very important that we went to, to talk to the union folks. And so like I said, it wasn't as fun as the banquet or the play, but I think it was as important. To do that and. Just really proud of this district. We've got some issues, but we'll get through it. We'll get it fixed.
Take a direct to cotton, direct to Bishop.
I appreciate the people who spoke as far as classified staff. I appreciate knowing how things affect other people. Those concerns are heard. That's a big deal and. I know it's negotiation time and. It's good to know as much as possible before going into those negotiations. So I appreciate that. Thank you for all those, all those that showed up as well. Thank you.
Make sure lesson.
Yeah, thank you. We want to hear from parents and teachers and our staff. I want. All of our staff, especially as we go into Teacher Appreciation Week. I've always thought of it as really staff appreciation week because. What happens in a school can't happen without everyone's contributions from the bus drivers to the secretaries. To our teacher aides, to our librarians, to our teachers, to our administrators. It really does take a, a team. I've been lots of places with Rod, although I went to the play on a different night. I, I kind of spent a weekend of. Going to the FFA auction and catching the middle school musical before jumping on a plane with our high school band kids. As they had a chance to go to Disneyland and work in a recording studio there and travel with them. And tomorrow I'm looking forward to the Melrose Science Fair. But something that you see as you attend all of these events is that none of them would be possible without the adults that were mentoring those kids. And we have great kids. I, I couldn't believe how well behaved our students, how well they represented Roseburg as we traveled. We had actually several flight attendants pull us aside and said they'd never dealt with a school group that was as polite and respectful. As our kids were. They were like, if every school group could be like these Roseburg High kids, they were just floored. But everything that happened for those kids happens because. But everything that happened for those kids happens because there are educators making it happen. And I just hope that you know how grateful I am personally as a parent for the experiences that you are providing for my children and for all the children in our community.
Thank you very much, Chair Larson. I'd like to share with the board that last week I was the guest speaker at the high school discussing communication skills. It was an honor and a privilege to approach our children. And on behalf of the board, each of you that came out here tonight gave up a valuable time and we do not take it lightly. We appreciate it. We listen and we're going to do something about it. So work with us. We work with you. We're here to serve you and likewise, you're here to help us serve you. With no other comment being made, our next meeting will be held on May the next week will be held May tenth, the director school board meeting at six PM at Fremont Middle School at eight fifty West Kitty Street. We ask that you please come attend to that.
I think the folks that came to speak on behalf the stadium would like some guidance, maybe where if it's going to be an action item next board meeting or or have we had that discussion yet?
We, we have not had that discussion yet and we will follow school policy. The policy will give us the guidance and directions of what we do. And then we will make it public so we know what they did. Okay? Okay? With no other business before this board meeting tonight, on behalf of the board, I appreciate you coming. Have a great weekend. God bless you. Good night. Meeting adjourned.